Okay, I'd like to call to order our city special city council workshop of June 6th. The second item on the agenda is discussion of our fiscal year 2017-2018 Oklahoma Municipal League service fee, and we have three representatives from the municipal league. Leroy, were you going to make any introductory comments?
No, I'll just let OML present the value to our community for being members of OML.
Okay, all right. Who will you make that?
I'll start, how about that?
Okay, right here. Just introduce yourself to the whole group, and he's the new guy in town.
I am, and so you won't hear a lot from me tonight because I've only been director for 48 hours now. So, the significance is that you guys are my first trip as the executive director here, but I can't think of a better place. Now, just some little background, I recently just moved from Kasha. So, I shopped here, I spent time here, I ate here at Staples all the time, put on a lot of weight, but we actually just got closer into the city just recently, but I loved spending time in Guthrie. My name's Mike Fina, like I said, I've just been the executive director for two days. I'll give you just a quick background about me. Former mayor of Piedmont, first was on the city council, and then was elected mayor in 2007. Spent 13 years working in state government before I did some private sector work, and then this opportunity came open, and I always loved municipal government, and it's always been my passion. And the things that I did as an OML member were the things that I think I loved most about being mayor, the programs that we did, and getting to work with other mayors, the congress mayors, and getting to work with the fine people at OML. And we did a lot of really good things for municipalities when I was there. So, when this position came open, I thought, you know, that's what I've always loved, and I left a very lucrative job to come back to work in municipal government, because I believe this is where government begins, and this is probably the hardest job in government, and it needs as much support as possible. I've been there right with you when the constituents are literally hanging over your desk, they're not happy with what you did in the meeting, so I understand. So, we've got a lot of big plans at OML. We are going to, I feel like OML should be the centerpiece of all things that are municipal, and that's the direction that we're going, and I believe that we are the foremost municipal organization out there, but we're going to get even better. There's a tremendous value to all the cities. Now, Missy and Sue Ann are going to kind of go over that part of it with you. I'm just more here for an introduction so you can get to know me. I will say that Guthrie is very critical to the municipal world. I don't have to explain to you the historical significance of this city, and how important it is, and it's equally important to OML. And we don't want you just to be members, we want you to be active members. We want all of you guys to participate in our program, because it's your knowledge and the things that you've learned here that helps help other cities, because really what OML is a conglomerate of all municipalities working together to make Oklahoma better and make ourselves better. So, that's my two-minute canned speech. Now, I'm going to let the real people, the real smart people get up here and introduce Missy and Sue Ann.
Throw them in the fire.
I gotta know, is there a spot on the chip plate?
It's the one that's burned out.
That one's this way.
That's all right.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. It was very interesting when Missy and I were preparing this, just to actually put it down on pieces of paper. How I would describe the municipal league is we're in the information business. You see that throughout all of our services that we provide, our publications, and this is all in-depth in this paper, but I'll just talk about it generally, our publications, the way we communicate. We have a weekly newsletter, we send it all electronically, so we need your email address, particularly for you new elected officials, so you'd receive that. But we provide information on new developments, on training opportunities, developments at the federal level as well as the state level. We also, during the legislative session, which Missy loves, and I'm not so sure about, that goes from December, or basically January, when the bills start being filed, through the end of May, and we put out, and call it the Municipal Advocate, every week, again, electronically, so we need your email addresses. But in that, we describe the bills, we summarize them, we give you an update both on what happened during the week and what's scheduled for the next week. And particularly in the legislative arena, I think it's very important to battle at the state capitol for local control. Now, we're not battling for a certain result back home, that's your jobs. You folks have taken that hard step of running for municipal office, and taking all the good things and the bad things that come along with that, so you deserve the ability to be able to make those decisions locally. And for the first time, this legislative session, as I read the bills and summarize them, I actually had an entire category on municipal preemption, just across the board in all kinds of areas, though we were able to defeat a lot of those bills, and there's another page that describes them in more detail. But fighting for local control at the state capitol is vital. The league can't do it by ourselves, we need you all as partners and elected officials across the state, because you never know which legislator is going to make the difference. Someone who you may have gone to school with, or they're part of your family, or you have a relationship with can make all the difference in the legislative process, and we're really much stronger if we stay together. Those are our publications, our training. We have a plethora of training over a wide area. We say at the league that we do everything from annexation to zoning, and we really do it from A to Z. We have a lot of training opportunities, both to do best practices and to assist on getting the best product, for instance, utilities, or to decrease potential legal risk in employment matters. Just grant program that we had this past year, we had, I think, over 90 people, where we've invited in the state agencies who would give the grants to meet you up with those individuals. We've done economic development, just a wide variety. Our conference, our statewide conference is coming up. It's a huge ability to meet other municipal officials, to do that networking, develop those relationships that can come in handy, as well as a lot of educational opportunities. Several of our programs are highlighted on this sheet. The major one is with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. It was formed one day at lunch, where we were talking about, it was during the economic downturn, 2008, 2009, and we were talking about the need to really be able to engage with the tax commission, and develop a relationship with the senior staff there. And so, literally, I turned over a napkin and on the back drew a map of the state of Oklahoma, and based on that, we formed our liaison to the tax commission. They meet every week, they have for about the last seven years. Tony Mastin, the director of the tax commission, has met with us at least quarterly, and during the legislative session, it was monthly. We've developed many programs, for probably the biggest for the city of Guthrie, as far as cities and towns across the state, is that we were able, through an exhaustive research, working with the tax commission, discovered that you were overpaying, every community across the state was overpaying for their collection of your sales and use taxes. We were actually subsidizing the state collection because of the money that municipalities were paying. They agreed, they realized that after a little discussion, and they agreed to cut that fee in half. And based on the tax collections of three years ago, the city saved, and this is a continuing saving, as a half percent of your sales and use tax that the tax commission collects, but three years ago, it was basically $22,700, and that's an every-year savings you have. We have many programs in the past with the tax commission, we also have an ongoing one, looking at just the exhaustive list, so there are 150 sales tax exemptions. The money involved in that is huge, it's bigger than the budget the legislature just passed. It's $7 billion, and change, with all the sales tax exemptions, and our idea was, it's politically impossible to retract some of those sales tax exemptions because they're politically popular. If I had one, I'd fight to keep it, so would all the rest of us. So, our ideal was, let's do compliance activities. Let's work with the tax commission, let's look at their computer programs, let's take the idea of smart cards, let's look at what other states do, and through that process, that ongoing process, they're developing a new program to really look at the sales tax exemptions to be able to increase their compliance activity. Another area with the state agencies, and really, the interaction with state agencies are undervalued, I think, and we're trying to do more of that, is with the Department of Environmental Qualities, an example. With the economic downturn a few years ago, they tried to do great big fee increases. Well, we fought that, we engaged with them, we had a number of meetings, we tried to get a budget, we tried to help them economize and streamline their operations. That didn't work so well, but we were able to get that fee greatly decreased, and just, now this is based on the information of a few years ago, is $4,400 that you saved. So, those are just specific things we can do to quantify it. Leaving that area, we have other groups, there are the Conference of Mayors, for example. It's a wonderful organization that the league formed about 20, 25 years ago. It's an organization for mayors, and council members can come as well. We've met here, you were kind enough to host us the last two years, and over 150 or so people came to your community. So, there's leadership classes, and there's a whole lot to talk about, I'll keep talking, but with a lawyer, you have to tell me, do you want, so I'll start that process. But we just wanted to come and let you know about us, and introduce our new director that we're very excited about, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and Missy's going to talk about the legislative session, because she likes it, so is there any questions I can answer? I'd be happy to.
Thanks.
Well, either I did a really good job, or you're afraid I'll keep talking, so thank you very much.
We may bring you back.
Oh, thank you.
All right, I am Missy Dean, I'm the Director of Governmental Relations and Member Services. Yes, I am one of the crazy people that enjoys session. I always kind of hate when it's over, I get depressed. For this week, I've kind of stayed in my office and really liked to talk to people. I feel like the cities and towns had a successful year this year, as OML, with 45 new legislators out there. We didn't really push for anything this year, because we didn't know what these people were going to come up with, what kind of ideas were. So, we started off with over 2,400 bills, and we tracked about 800, you know, 900 of those bills, and we literally put them in tracking lists, and we read every version that goes through the legislative process to make sure that we are not missing anything, that a word doesn't get put in there that could potentially harm you all. We were successful in stopping a lot of the local preemption bills, like Sue Ann mentioned. There were several preemption bills that would have just totally wiped out all your ordinances when it came to prosecution of drug offenses. There were bills out there that would totally wipe out your ordinances, even if you were a charter city, that, you know, were more stringent than what the state had. There were several bills out there that totally preempted your bill on firearm legislation. Basically, you could not prohibit an individual from carrying a firearm anywhere, and if an individual did feel like they were harmed, then they could sue the city, and then sue you legally, or civilly too, and that would have cost you all a lot of money. So, we were able to stop those bills. And one of the things that we do is, which we have in here, is called a brick alert, and we send these out, not on every single bill, but just sparingly, because we try to use them wisely, because if you keep getting them every single time that a bill pops up, then you will not react. And we do these only on very, very important bills. Close to, I guess, in April, there was a bill, House Bill 2322, which was one of the firearm preemption bills, wasn't going to be heard, then we heard it was going to be scheduled on the senate floor. We set out an action alert that morning. The cities called, it was great. I mean, I was working the legislators, and you could tell which cities called their legislators, because they're like, oh yeah, I've heard from Guthrie, I've heard from so-and-so, I've heard from this city. We were able to stop the bill. Then the legislature, the senator decided he was going to hold it on a motion to reconsider so he could bring it back up. Well, he kind of did some finagling, and said he fixed it, and it was going to solve everybody's problem, well, not the total truth, but anyway, we sent out another group, which is the one in your packet, and, you know, asked the senators not to support the motion to reconsider, that way the bill would be dead for the year. And you all did, and it worked, and we were able to stop this. And I mean, the gun lobby is a powerful lobby out there, for municipalities to be able to stop something like this was a huge still. Again, the Weekly Advocate that we send out, it does provide you this information, so if you do have questions on bills that are listed in there, and each week is a different list, because it just depends on what's going on, you know, just let us know, call us, you know, we're there for you. We have the inquiry service, Kelly Danner is our inquiry specialist. She did 169 calls this month from different municipalities, and helps them, you know, can't give legal advice, but she, you know, helps them find, you know, ordinances, and rules, and statutes, and things like that, and they can help other municipalities. You know, the Congress of Mayors that Sue Ann touched on, I mean, that was great, we've had that here twice, and Mayor Gentling was a gracious host, and we had a lot of fun, and we really enjoyed it. You know, we have a mayor's retreat that we hope that you will come to, we have the conference, as she mentioned. We also do the newly elected officials training. That is a requirement for first-time elected and first-time appointed officials, and Sue Ann is one of our teachers, she does a great job. But, you know, we have that on Thursday, and we have 150 people coming to that. Next week, we have one in Tulsa, and we have about 150 people coming to that, so, you know, we do offer a lot of services. You know, our Community Leadership Development Training Class is a leadership program that goes around the state, and we have six classes of that. Guthrie has been a host to one of those. So, there are just a lot of opportunities for you to get involved, a lot of ways that OML can help you, and we just really appreciate this opportunity to come and tell you our story. Thank you.
Where do we sign? Questions of any of the three that have presented?
I'll start out with some questions. Of course, I'm generally supportive of OML, so, but can be all nice, so I'll ask a few questions. I'd be interested to know if we compare to Kansas, Arkansas, Missouri, municipal leagues, how their membership costs compared to Oklahoma?
Mike, I'm sure you know that.
I was going to say.
Kansas, Arkansas, Missouri?
You can research it.
I'll research that.
I just wondered what it costs relative for a community our size, our sales tax base, and other states, how do they compare their memberships to their municipal leagues as cities in Oklahoma?
I will, and I do, you know, I do know, I've kind of acted with the National League of Cities, I go to their State League Staff Workshop and participate there. You know, there's the different leagues, we're kind of unique, because we don't have an insurance program like a lot of the other leagues, so a lot of the other leagues can subsidize their service fees by revenue that they get from their insurance program, but I will look into that. You know, we kind of have a funky formula, I think, but it works, it's worked for a long time, so, I know one of the priorities of our new director is to look at, and has directed from the board, is to look at other revenue options, so that we're not so dependent on service fees. And so, you know, maybe by tomorrow, he'll have all that planned ahead of him, but yes, I'll look into that and get back to you.
A couple of things, especially one, the process to trying to get ant食 property tax options from municipalities. You talked about a lot of wins, but we haven't got a win there yet.
Okay, well, we had the Public Safety District bill this year, House Bill 1374. We got it all the way to the senate. When you have the pro tem of the senate, who is a Farm Bureau supporter, a former Farm Bureau president, he was not going to allow that to move.
So, basically, that's a rural-urban issue?
Correct. And I will tell you, I mean, I worked well with the police and fire unions, but I also worked well with the other ag groups, the cattleman's association, the pork council, the wheat growers. You know, I had conversations with them about that. Not that they came out and supported it or anything, but they kind of took a backseat to it, because, you know, they kind of see the benefit of it, but it is a longstanding policy with the Farm Bureau to oppose any ant食 increase, even though that bill totally exempted ag land. I mean, we wanted to do that, so we wouldn't have the fight with the Farm Bureau, but that was one that they went to bat against us.
As you say, their membership would be a great inside city limits, but...
Yeah, but back alley, when their farm land's on fire, they want all your help.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. The last point I wanted to make, and this is a little negative, I guess, but on the tax commission, in reducing the fee for collecting a sales tax, of course, there was a lot of OML membership involved in that, as well as staff, to make that happen, but that was in 2014. As a city manager, I can't live off of what I've done years ago, so you can only live off of that win so long, is something I just want to point out. I know it was a great win.
But it's a continual win?
Well, there's a lot of things I do as a city manager that's continuous, but only give credit for it once.
Well, and we continue to work with the tax commission in trying to get legislation to help them with better compliance. I mean, last year, we, House Bill 2449, was, they were one of like the only, you know, agencies that got an increase, they got $49 million for compliance. That was something that we helped them with, so that they could go out and get, you know, audit more people, and get, you know, make sure that they're paying their sales and use tax. Last year, we passed House Bill 2531, which was the E fairness bill, which earlier this year, Amazon, you know, signed on with an agreement with the state to start, you know, collecting and remitting the use tax. There's issues with that, because Amazon has a lot of third-party sellers on their spud. Tony has told our municipal liaison board that he is trying to, you know, work with those third-party sellers, get them to sign on contracts, and get them to also remit that funding back. Last year, we also had the 911 fee, and, you know, that we got that fee increased from 50 cents to 75 cents, so you should be seeing a benefit out of that. You know, there's a lot of things, you know, money-wise, I mean, this year, the budget, you know, nobody saw the budget until Tuesday night at like 11:30, and not really even then did you know what was going to happen. You know, we were fearful, because DEQ got, you know, cut by 4.8%, but then they also took a million dollars out of their revolving fund, which basically was their revolving fund plus some money. So, we're, you know, now we're going to be fearful that DEQ's going to come back to the cities and try to, you know, increase their fees, and, you know, fill up their budget hole, you know, in the backs of us. So, we will continue to work with DEQ, and with their director, and with their board. We have several of our board members that also serve on the DEQ board, Mayor Nicholson from Hocka City, and Dan Brinkinshaw from the city of Stillwater, so that's helpful for us.
Again, OML does some wonderful things, I'm not saying that, but I thought it was worth the use of questions. And you have to bear in mind that our budget is tight, and we're reducing positions to make our ends meet, and so we have to look at everything to determine what's the best expenditure of our city dollars, and that's why I thought it was important for you all to come visit with the city council.
Now, Missy, the fee is a combination of population-based sales tax, is that correct?
Yes, yes, yes it is.
She's our budget queen.
Sue Ann?
Yes.
Okay. So, you've got two things that kind of filter into what the fees are.
Yes.
And has that been a longstanding calculation?
Yes, that's been around since probably about 1972.
It's based on collections or rate?
Well, it's based on 1% of the sales tax, so it doesn't matter what your rate is, it's only based on 1%.
What you collect.
That's part of the formula, yes, sir.
And, Missy, I know you mentioned the Congress of Mayors, but under your umbrella, there's a lot of other organization focus too. There's on attorneys, there's city clerks and treasurers, I believe.
Yeah, we have the municipal clerks and treasurers, we have the municipal judges association, we work closely with Oklahoma Good Enforcement Association. If you ever want to, you know, file a bill against them that's going to attack their profession by golly, they're the best advocates out of the Capitol, I will tell you. You know, we have them, you know, Kelly Danner works closely, she's on the board of OMCTFOA, which is the Municipal Clerks, Treasurers, and Finance Officers Association. We do some things with the Municipal Court Clerks Association. We have several different, we have our legislative committee that, you know, develops our policy for our organization, and it's made up of, you know, policy directors, court clerks, mayors, managers, council members, vice mayors. John Woods served on our legislative committee for a really long time, so, yeah, we have a lot of organizations.
And Mike, where do you want to take the organization in the next couple of years?
Where do I want to take it?
Yeah, you've got two minutes.
Great. Here's what I, here's what, the reality of what, where I feel like OML is. I think it's a fantastic organization, and I think it does tremendous things. I think we've been doing the same tremendous things for quite a while, and we're very good at it, but we can be so much more. When you have a conglomerate of as many cities as we have, and as many fine elected officials that we have, we can be bigger and we can be better. I want to see all the municipal groups, I want to see the city managers group, I want to see the judges, the attorneys, we need to be more cohesive. And I believe that OML, not that OML is any more important than any of those groups, but I do believe that it is the centerpiece of all municipal things, and I think that OML is the one that needs to pull all those things close together, so we can work better to protect municipalities, and have a stronger voice at the Capitol. You know, I try not to pat myself on the back for this, but I'm going to use it as the example. I actually am the one that started the Congress of Mayors in 2000. I started that for one purpose, because I wanted municipal officials to understand that the job that the legislators do, although it be very important, that it is not any different than what you do at this level, and that they're not working any kind of magic up there that you guys can't perform right here in Guthrie, and that you can sit in those chairs, you can talk on those microphones, and it's actually a little bit easier than what you do. And I wanted municipal officials to understand how that worked, because I think we felt like there was a barrier between us and the Capitol, and that that was just out of my control. Well, it's not. If you understand how the system works, and you understand how bills process through the committees, through the floor, to the governor's office, if you have a good understanding of that, then you can control your own destiny. That's what, and there was one other part that I wanted city councilmen and mayors to learn also, that because it's not as hard as you think it is, you can do it too. And the more municipal officials that we get elected to the Capitol, the better the state is going to be, because right now, and I have a lot of friends at the Capitol, people that I adore very much, there's not a lot of experience up there. There's not a lot of business experience, and there's sure not a lot of government experience. And if you can sit and do this job in Guthrie, Oklahoma, then you can do that job up there, because I've been there with you. This is much tougher. And that was the whole reason for creating Congress of Mayors, was to teach councilmen and mayors that the process and that they can do too. So, we want to continue good programs like that.
I had a follow-up question on the rate formula. If I understand correctly, it's a half a percent of 1% of your sales tax.
The league's formula, it's not a half a percent, it's like point, I may get these decimal points wrong, I can correct it later, but it's like .001, it's a very small part of 1%.
Okay, on the sheet I had is .005.
Yeah, mine is long.
Ah, well, then it's .005.
Good recovery.
I was mentioning your address.
I just wondered how long it has been.
.005, yeah.
.005.
Well, that's been that way for a very long time, I can check to see, but for a very long time.
Okay. To me, that's a half a percent.
Well, .005. 4.005.
Point one of the...
Half of it.
Yes, half, half percent.
Any other questions from our friends from OML?
How many cities do you have as members? Cities and towns?
460.
Out of, out of how many possible?
Well, I mean, there's total incorporated, I believe, is 586, but a lot of those are like itty-bitty that really don't have any sales tax base or anything like that. But we do have small communities, like Cooperton, which is, you know, population 12, I think six of them live in the same house. You know, I always ask, do you have, I always ask the mayor, do you have to put like an agenda on your door every day? But, you know, from them, then, you know, up to, you know, Oklahoma City and Tulsa, obviously. But yeah, all over the state, from the Panhandle to the, you know, to the southeast corner.
There are a few of the larger ones that do not belong though currently up there.
There's just a handful of them. A lot of them have started coming, they've been back for a couple of years.
Because all, I mean, whether you're a member or not, you benefit, you benefit from what you do.
Yeah, I heard a couple of comments about that some of the councilmen are not receiving email legislative updates, which are, I think, very good. Is that something that we need to correct?
If you will send us your email, we will, I mean, Ken has my email, but I will send it to everyone. If you will give us your email, then we will, by God, get it in the system. One thing that happens though, is if you, if we do send out an email and you accidentally hit unsubscribe, it unsubscribes you to every single email then going forward. So you may not want to receive that particular email, but if you hit unsubscribe instead of just deleting it, you're out of our system. So, but if there's new people and everything, you know, please give you a my card. Give us your email and we will make sure...
Who's not getting it, guys?
Okay, good. We got a couple, we got a couple new members.
I'll get it.
Are you getting it already?
It probably goes to my city.
Yeah, just send whatever email you want it to because, I mean...
Jason, you getting it?
No.
Jim says he's given it, getting it. It's a very good product.
Yes, cattle. Oh, yeah. I got to book that.
Anything else before we turn these fine folks loose? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your...
I probably don't have cards, USB.
I said you had your card before you even got here. Came for this business, guys.
You got a plan. Think ahead.
Okay, that's the only thing we get on the agendas or any other discussion you all want to have here?
I don't know that we can.
Just on this topic.
Just on this topic.
Yep.
Do we get a breakdown to see where the Amazon sales tax?
That just started, so we really can't give you much of an impact. We can't publicly say what one single entity collects its sales tax, either we're prohibited from doing that. When we do the next budget, we may have an estimate in there of impact from Amazon, but that just started.
You know, I would think they would have been easier for them to deal with Amazon on collecting this tax because Amazon is the one that collects it on the front end, not the third party. At least on everything I've bought, it's Amazon that collects it. ABD, third party doesn't.
Third party's not collecting though, you're right.
No, it's Amazon that's collecting.
Yeah, it's coming up on my stuff already, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Mine too. It's all Amazon.
Amazon does third-party contract so that they are legally responsible for the products.
But they collect the money. My payment goes to Amazon. That's what I'm getting to.
Since the seller doesn't have the major nexus in Oklahoma, technically, they shouldn't have a burden to collect sales tax in the state.
Yeah, but regardless, Amazon is the one that collects the money. Amazon is the one that would be paying the money, not the third party.
And they would be the one charging the third party for the bill.
Well, they're not going to charge the third party. They're going to pay the third party the portion that you pay. You pay them 12 bucks and two of it's taxed. Third party's getting 10.
How long have we been allowing OML?
Forever.
Well, probably, it probably goes back a little further than this, but we've paid their dues since 2002. And there's only been two years that we didn't pay, and that was in 2005 and 2010.
See, I'm liking these, these figures a lot better than these figures.
How's it went up over the years?
30%.
It's just gradually gone up in, what, 15 years? From 5,600 to 8,600 or 8,700.
Well, the training programs that they put on are, I think, quite good. Those of us that have been through the initial...
Yeah, but that's mandatory, whether you belong to OML or not, you have to go back. And we have to pay for that.
Right. And actually, I believe, all of their sessions, like the Congress for Mayors, for instance, you don't have to be a member to go. I believe that that's the case.
Well, that's what they said. The one that's in itabell coming up.
Yeah.
If there's a fee, there's a higher fee for a non-member.
That could be. I'm not paying attention to that. That would make sense. That would make sense that there is.
But what do we really use them for? We use them for the new enrollment? What else do we use them for?
Well, their newsletters they put out during the legislative session to keep you informed of all of the bills that are being processed and a synopsis of what they are and where they're at in the process is very helpful information. That's a good source of knowing what's going on in the legislature in case you want to have input on that so you don't have to track it yourself. That's a good service. Some of the training programs they put on, they put on one on planning that it's not the best, but it's not bad either.
For planning?
Yes, city planning, for city planners. So they put on other training sessions besides just for new council members.
Do we utilize those?
I don't know if Guthrie's utilized in the past since I have not been here. I know we utilized it when I was at McAllister. And McAllister did not belong for, oh, probably a couple of years when they had a budget downturn. But then when they got the tax commission to agree to knock off a half percent. And I will tell you, during the two years that McAllister was not a member, they still sent us all the same information that everybody else got. They still treated us pretty much like we were members. We weren't outcasts. And they continued the relationship and McAllister did decide to rejoin. It's just that I don't think they should live off that one victory forever.
No. And I don't think that they, that they will, would treat you as an outcast because they want you back.
Correct.
So they still want to be, put their product in front of you.
Correct.
And they would still like to have you involved. And so...
But with the way our budget situation is, we wanted you all to hear from them on the services they provided and before we renew our membership, we just want it to be booked on the city council.
And they also provide a utility rate study that they contact all other communities members that they have on their utility rates and also for salary and benefits.
Yeah, most of the salaries come from OML.
They do a wage and salary benefit. They also have a labor roundtable that recently I haven't participated in, but in years past I have when there's been major legislation or some major developments with regard to, you know, labor relations and labor developments, you know, kind of the what's going on within the state of Oklahoma. I mean, they're a good focal point for that as well. But yes, the wage, salary, and benefit survey is a very good benchmark, but...
And is that only available to members?
I think you can buy, you can buy one that's not cheap if you're not a member because it's a pretty, it's good size and it contains a lot of positions that, you know, a city mayor may not have. So it's a very valid, but you can purchase it from, I can't remember. It's a few hundred bucks, 500 bucks, I think, something like that if you're not a member. If you're a member, it's free. That's the thing they do, I think, is lobby for cities because the legislature, those guys down there don't have a clue about municipal government network and they're ready to screw you anytime they can. It's been my experience over the years. Excuse my Greek. And they keep up with that stuff during the legislative session. We can't do it. None of us can do that.
I do like the way when they make their presentations, they talk about all the wins. They don't mention any of they didn't win.
No, they don't.
We would.
But it's kind of like the lawyer that never lost a case, never tried very many. When you're down there dealing with those people, you know how legislation gets made and it's good and it's bad, and you're going to win, you always. But you need somebody in there fighting for you.
I don't miss you. Lives for that.
Well, and I call them regularly. There's one issue here and other things.
Which has been doing it for a number of years.
Well, we're working the budget. I mean, you've, you're figuring this into the next budget for October, right?
Correct.
So...
I mean, I think it gives us a good value. I think they perform a pretty good service for us and they have in the past...
I guess what I'm asking...
It's a lot of information that we definitely need to have.
You haven't mentally taken it out of the budget, have you? Is where I was going with this.
No.
And we're also a member of ACOG and we, it's around 7,500, I would say, our membership would be with them.
Probably need them in too. I don't even know what they do. Been here two years.
Other transportation money goes to RedcoG.
Lot of grant opportunities, at least that surface at the ACOG meetings that Jeff and I have gone to.
We probably need to review it at some point because a lot of the grant programs they have were outside their service territory.
I haven't had any dealings with any of it in two years, have you?
But they do a, they do some review of legislative proposals that are on the, that the Capitol is undertaking.
They deal with 911 too.
Yeah, 911. Good point, chief. Yeah. But yeah, transportation is kind of one of their major focuses. And how can we, as a conglomerate of communities in central Oklahoma, do a better job of planning and getting more budget support in? But very similar to some of the things that OML does in terms of legislative review. Anything else, any other comments, questions? Okay, folks?